In Osamis City, you're watching One TV News Channel. Serving you with information, news, sports, and public affairs. One TV News Channel. Serving you with love. Ang telebisyon pang masa. One TV News Channel. One TV News Channel. One TV Special Report.
For the order of business, may I request Honorable Majority Floor Leader, Honorable Marsha Tapayan, please.
Yes, Honorable Chair, thank you. Good afternoon. Good afternoon, everyone. We have a guest, a people's hour, Honorable Chair. We have Police Inspector Lloyd M. Villaroya, Bureau of Fire Protection, City Fire Marshal of San Sidi, with his colleagues, Prime Minister of San Sidi. I move to suspend the rules to allow him to speak for us. May I request Chief Inspector Villaroya to occupy a table with microphone? And may I request that he will be actulis, Honorable Chair, to sit down there to us, Honorable Chair.
Ruh suspended.
Please.
Yes, Ruh suspended in order to accommodate our visitor for the people's hour. Police Inspector Lloyd Villaroya, you are now recognized by the chair.
Good afternoon. I am Fire Chief Inspector Lloyd M. Villaroya, the newly installed City Fire Marshal of Osamis Fire Station. I, before I was the... I came from Malabala City. I am the resident of Malabala City, Bukidnun. I am the former acting provincial fire marshal of Bukidnun for two years before I transferred here as the City Fire Marshal of Osamis. My respect and honor, of course, your honor, to our Vice Mayor, Honorable Simplesia Bibi Neri. And my respect also to our Secretary of the Sangguniang Panglongso, Tony Ronnie Tapayan. Sir, Honorable Lorli Ip Zipres. Honorable Kathy Catherine C. Lim, your honor. Honorable Cecil Ko. Honorable Marcelo Isrumero II, sir. Honorable Dinkie B. Sueso, sir. Honorable Daniel Silau, sir. Honorable Juanito B. Sakrin Jr., sir. Honorable Marsilian C. Tapayan, sir. Thank you so much. Honorable Saulo I. Salvador, sir. Honorable Sancho I. Junior, sir. Honorable Juan Carlo I. Muralion, sir. And Honorable Jan Phil Duaylongso, the Escape Federation President, sir. Good afternoon.
I am so thankful and grateful for this opportunity to conduct party call in this honorable August body. And it is the tradition of any uniform personnel, especially in the BAP, that we will conduct at most courtesy to the Sangguniang Panglongso. Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
We deeply appreciate your gesture of having courtesy call to this August body. Is there anybody who would like to ask some questions or inquire some few points to Chief Inspector Lloyd Villaroya from the Bureau of Fire Protection? The table is open now. Yes, Honorable Majority Floor Leader.
Yes, Honorable Chair. Would like to assure Police Major Villaroya that the city council will always be supportive of our fire department here in San Sidi. In fact, for the past six years, from our first term until 1919 and until now, our city mayors, then mayor and do, and then mayor and the now congressman of the province are supporting the BAP as we have done before, sir. I would just like to assure you to continue your advocacy to help the people of San Sidi, especially in our calamities and in case of fire, you continue being alert to respond to our needs of San Sidi, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir, for your 100% support.
Your Honorable Majority Floor Leader have spoken in behalf of the members of this August body. Should there be anybody who would like to share also? Yes, Honorable Waminan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, everyone. Sir Lloyd, can I ask you something? Sir, October 13th was our turnover, sir. The date of our... Date of the order from our original director, sir. October 13th, 2025.
Sir, if you were to say how is your personnel in the Bureau of Fire, including your trucks? How is it? Is there any problem?
We have 45 strongmen, members of the Osamis Fire Station, sir. And we have five fire trucks. Unfortunately, the first fire truck is 55 years old and the other one is 50 years old.
Dinepated.
And the three are still serviceable and the two is under repair. The Morita is under repair and the 55 years old is needs to be repaired again, your honor.
So, on your plan, would you say you want to repair?
The Morita fire truck, we asked the Surgeon Chua to help us to identify those defects. Then hopefully... It was said, Surgeon Chua, hopefully tomorrow identify the defects then we will procure those defects to replace the fire trucks, especially the primary and secondary clutch. At the same time, there's something wrong in the engine because 50 years old is the Morita. And then the other one is your brake, sir. The tanker has a little problem. Those are the only two. So far, unserviceable, but the three is serviceable as of right now. The new Isuso and the two, Jack and the...
How is your personnel, sir? Is it accurate or is it lacking in your personnel?
Actually, sir, based on the organizational structure, the ideal number of personnel is lacking, sir. Hopefully, we hope to add more because based on population ratio, we need more firefighters because we have a program, the OLP, the Opalan Ligtas na Pamayanan, that we are going to check or evaluate those communities, especially inform ourselves that if possible, there are bombings in the communities, sir. That's the problem we have. We have 50, 51 barangays. We need one fireman to check. So, it's a responsibility that every barangay, there has to be a bombing in the barangay. So, police, sir, we can come up with that. That's what we lack. And also, fire safety inspectors in all the establishments.
Sir, we have priority. If there are any problems, if there is a lack of trucks, if there is a lack of personnel, so let's try to address that matter, at least. We have priority to solve it, sir. So, let's solve it, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Honorable Sancho. Thank you for your wisdom, sir. Soon, sir, we will write a letter addressed to the mayor to address this problem, sir. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you, Sir Lloyd. That's all, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Waminan. Yes, Honorable Sakin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sir, how many fire hydrants are functional in our city?
The functional hydrants as of now, your honor, is only 59 out of 65. There is one condemned, then the three, the four, is non-operational, sir. Meaning, there are only a few, a few only water. So, only 59 out of 65 is operational or serviceable. Meaning, there is no water. The pressure, pressure, we pressured, sir, the hydrants, derivative in the San Sidi, sir.
So, what is your move regarding the slow pressure of fire hydrant?
Police, sir, we will coordinate with prime water. If they transfer it to a pressure or a source of water, because we don't know if there is a water source or not in the condemned. Or why is it that the four is not unserviceable? So, we will coordinate with them and hopefully transfer it to a pressure. And then, my second program is coordinate with the CDRMF to procure more fire hydrants based on the four thematic areas for, if they transfer it to us, hopefully.
As soon as possible.
Yes, sir. I will pray that I can convince our beloved mayor that the fund will be from the CDRMF to procure additional fire hydrants.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you, Honorable Chair.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Sakin, for your queries. Honorable Lim, for some queries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sir, with regards to the fires in Anex, because I got a PM regarding their office. Did you turn over what is missing in their office? Like, is it okay if the space is there? What is the problem? And then, is there a solution for their problem?
Thank you so much, ma'am. I heard from my ground, uh, substation commander that God gave them, meaning, gave them the area. So, we are trying, we don't have to conduct a courtesy call, Captain. Hopefully, I can convince him that, if the senior citizen's office is bigger compared to the present office, if it is possible to transfer it to the stockroom, the senior citizen's office. So, hopefully, ma'am, your honor, I can visit and conduct party call with Captain Kanomai that if he will allow us to transfer to senior citizen to a larger and very convenient, your honor. And hopefully... Because that's the problem of my colleagues. There are really many offices, especially for clients. There is no proper area or venue to accommodate the visitors, especially those who will engage in business, especially requiring for, asking for EFC for business permit, your honor.
I know about it. It's nice to have Captain in Anex. So, I hope that as soon as possible, we can cater to the needs of the firemen in Anex. And it is vital to their health also, not to keep the office there. And also, update us on what is the problem that we can help you with, also our colleagues.
Thank you, your honor. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you, Honorable Lim. Yes, Honorable Duaylongso.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have only one question to ask. As fire marshal, to put into the record also in our Sangguniang, I would like to ask if, what are the expectation of the Osamis Nun about your leadership in the BFP Osamis, sir?
Yes, sir, Villaroya. Thank you, your honor. That's a very good question. And the expectation from us is we will diligently and religiously implement the mission that was given to us. The BB mission is we commit to prevent and suppress destructive fire and investigate all causes. If there will be fire incidents, then it is mandatory for us to investigate the cause and enforce the fire code of the Philippines, the Republic Act 9514. Meaning, the Bureau of Fire Protection will issue fire safety inspection certificate for occupancy and fire safety inspection certificate for business permit. EFC for occupancy is the prerequisite in the granting of occupancy permit by the Office of the Building Officials. So, hopefully, 100%, we can hand in and collab with the OBO, especially all the buildings, because this is a very perilous and dangerous days. There will be more earthquakes that is coming. There will be more disasters that is coming. And we will, as I've said, we will religiously implement the Republic Act 9514 and we will issue EFC for business permit as a prerequisite in granting the business permit. So, it is the responsibility of the BAP to inspect or to check the all structures, especially businesses, that before I will issue EFC, we have to see to it that it was well inspected. And the last, but not the least, is we are mandated by law to respond to man-made and natural disasters and other emergencies.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Villaroya.
Thank you, your honor. I hope that our beloved Honorable was convinced with my answer. Thank you, sir.
Any other? Yes, Honorable Sueso.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. With respect to our new Fire Marshal, Madam Chair, I believe that he has a big shoes to fill in because considering the problems that you have mentioned, that the manpower is not that enough. You also have so many problems regarding our fire hydrants. Maybe if you could make a report regarding your suggestions or recommendations that the LGU can provide with regards to probably substations because most of our barangays here, we have 30 plus urban barangays that maybe if you could recommend for a substation, maybe you could also include that in your report so that at least the LGU can provide because as you have mentioned, our businessmen are paying the fire permit and upon paying, they expect a lot from us and we need to provide them. So, probably, if there is a suggestion that there is a lack of water, a lack of water in the substation, a lack of fire hydrants, can they have it reported so that we could include that in our peace and order council? Or maybe we could include it, in a appropriate budgeting to eliminate the problems in Osamis that we have to pay for permits, but we don't have to provide services. So, with your recommendation, I think we could fill what we need to address, especially with the problems, especially with the business community.
Thank you, Yon. I will. I would like to inform this honorable August body that there is, hopefully, another substation in Gango. Then ongoing is the construction. Agua da Imin, Agua da Imin. And hopefully, another, we are looking for another prospect for a substation in San Roque. So, we need more fire trucks. And hopefully, sir, we will do a report and we will submit recommendations. And if possible, we will have more fire trucks and ambulances, if possible. Thank you, your honor.
Anybody wish to share something or inquire? Is there any question?
Yes, Honorable Chair. Last week, the Major Villaroya made a party call with the city council, with the Vice Mayor. And although not all councillors are here when he was here in the city council, he was in my office this week, I think Wednesday. So, I advise the good major and his colleagues to just monitor the fire hydrants and to make close connection with the prime water considering that we have no such water in San Sidi. There are complaints against the prime water. And he passed in a request for fire hydrants from the LGO. He can connect with the DRLMO as was what he said. And you can write a letter to the city mayor through the DRLMO and the committee on peace and order, city council, fire services, that I could discuss the matter with the mayor and the DRLMO, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you, your honor.
Okay, thank you very much, Honorable Tapayan, for your manifestation. Anybody who wish to inquire or ask some questions or some clarification to our Chief Villaroya?
I guess there are none anymore, Honorable Chair. So, we'd like to thank Major Villaroya for coming over and making a crucial to our council. And we look forward to a good partnership with the fire station, the new fire marshal in San Sidi. We look forward to no fire in San Sidi. Thank you, sir, for your coming.
Yes, the chair would like to acknowledge Chief Villaroya. Thank you so much for your assurance for an effective and efficient service for the people of Osamis. Yes, you have the floor now.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. In behalf of my comrades, 45 strong men and women, we are so thankful and grateful for this wonderful August body for allowing us to conduct party call and to see you face to face. And we are praying that the Creator, heaven, and we always bless this honorable body. And we also, please help us pray, that we will effectively and efficiently implement our mission. Thank you so much and God bless everyone.
Okay, thank you, Chief Villaroya.
I move to resume the rules. So, continue with our session, Honorable Chair.
Same up to dismiss our visitor.
We now go to item number five.
Rules continue.
Apology intended for today. There are about two request concessions, Honorable Chair, to order business. Requested by Honorable Cecil Yoko. There are two items requested by Honorable Cecil Yoko to be inserted in our order business. First, the request for us to pass a resolution expressing commendation on to the addition of Philippine Business Chamber of Commerce and Industry incorporated the San Sidi Philippine Business Chamber of Commerce Industry and providing hardware for the donation of a one-story two-classroom school building in favor of President Tranquito Senior Limited School. Second request for the resolution is expressing commendation on to Doctor Dina Pagoplaan Lamigo for religiously funding the construction of Balay Subhanian Prokogon Integrated School dedicated to enhance people's education for Subhanian learners. It's the only two request position, Honorable Chair. I did promote this motion to approve it intended for today with two concessions as mentioned a while ago, Honorable Chair.
There is a motion from the Honorable Majority Floor Leader for the approval of agenda for today with two concessions as being presented. Motion approved.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. There are no minutes attached to our order business. Item number six. We would sit item number seven, Little B. What was the resolution? Honorable Chair, Saulo I. Salvador is the person commending GC Little Giant Oliveros Espinas, International Boxing Federation, is a world champion, World Boxing Council. He is a champion for bringing honor and pride to San Sidi and to the Philippines and for inspiring boxers to work hard and give their best in pursuit of excellence and championship. Honorable Chair, I recently investigated the person of GC Oliveros Espinas. I was able to confirm that he is from San Sidi, although he is from Tranquito City, but is now a resident of San Sidi and is in fact issued as a voter of San Sidi and is now a member of the Sinusu Pinoy Party list. Now, I will give the power to the sponsor to honor to introduce a national on this item to Honorable Saulo Salvador, Honorable Chair.
The Honorable Saulo Salvador is now recognized by the chair for the appropriate motion.
Thank you, Mr. Majority Floor Leader. Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to pass a resolution commending GC Little Giant Oliveros Espinas, International Boxing Federation IBF Asia Flyweight Champion, World Boxing Council WBC Asia Champion for bringing honor and pride to San Sidi and to the Philippines and for inspiring, aspiring boxers to work hard and give their best in pursuit of excellence and championship. Whereas GC Oliveros Espinas, also known as the Little Giant, captured the IBF Asia Flyweight title by a technical knockout victory against Efrel J. Abney during the boxing event Bugan Sa Abra held on October 12th, 2025 at the Governor Andres B. Bernos Memorial Gymnasium, Bangged, Abra and WBC Asia Champion on June 5th, 2025 at the Hotho China. Whereas Espinas hold an impressive professional record of 25 wins and 7 losses and trains under Dr. J. Boxing Gym of Dr. J. C. Ayop in San Sidi. His dedication, perseverance, and remarkable success in boxing have brought him closer to becoming a world champion, serving as an inspiration to young and aspiring boxers in the city to revive the golden era of boxing that once flourished in San Sidi during the 1970s and 1980s. Whereas in Article 14 in Section 19 of the 1987 Philippine Constitution provides that the state shall promote physical education and encourage sports programs, league competition, and amateur sports, including training for international competitions to foster self-discipline, teamwork, and excellence for the development of a healthy and alert citizenry. Whereas in Section 16 of Republic Act Number 7160, otherwise known as the Local Government Code of 1991, empowers local government unit to enact policies and implement programs that promotes the general welfare of their constituents, including the recognition and support of exemplary individuals who bring honor to their city. Now, therefore, be it resolved as it is hereby resolved by the Sangguniang Panglongso of San Sidi in session duly assembled to commend GC Little Giant Oliveros Espinas, IBF Asia Flyweight Champion for his outstanding achievement and for bringing honor and pride to San Sidi and to the entire nation and for being a role model of determination, discipline, and excellence to all Osamis Nun. Resolve further that a copy of this resolution be furnished to Mr. GC Little Giant Oliveros Espinas for his information and record.
Thank you, Honorable Saulo Salvador. You're passing then on the first reading and moving again on the second and final reading as being presented.
Thank you, Madam Chair.